Mrs. Ferris.
Here.
Mr. Mack.
Here.
Mr. Postal.
Here.
Mrs. Zirke.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first item on the agenda is our Be a Titan recognition. Mr. Graves.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our second Be a Titan ceremony of the 21-22 school year. The Be a Titan ceremony started a couple of years back and was interrupted by the pandemic. But what our board wanted to do was be able to have an opportunity to recognize those students, staff, and community members who are exhibiting the behaviors that we talk about in our culture playbook. Tonight, we will be recognizing students, staff, and community members from our buildings. Our building principals will present the winners from their individual buildings. First, they will call up all of the award recipients forward at one time. They will come forward, and then the principals will give the awards out. Once the individual has received their award from the principal, they'll stand in front of the banner and have their photo taken by Kavanaugh Photography and then go back to their seat. Our first presenter this evening, as has become tradition, is Mr. De Senza from Berea Mid Park Middle School. Mr. De Senza.
Good evening. I think that the tradition started because of my brevity and simplicity. So, thanks for coming out tonight. We have five recipients from Berea Mid Park Middle School. If those five would come on up, stand right here. After I read wonderful things about you, we'll send you over for your picture. Jill Higgins, Emmy Gackey, Hannah Cunningham, Grace Anderson, and Adia Fadowski. All right, I thought I only saw three. But three great ones. All right. Adia. Adia is an eighth grader at Berea Mid Park Middle School. She is active in her school community, serves as a web leader, and ran cross-country. Recently, the staff at B M S learned about Adia's passion for not only her school community, but also her community at large. When we were introduced to a fundraiser she was sponsoring through St. Mary's Church in Berea, she is working to provide assistance to the Blessing House, which provides care for children birth through age 12 whose parents or caregivers are experiencing a crisis or an emergency. She is currently, or was collecting gift cards that can be provided to families and/or staff at the Blessing House for basic necessities to help care for the children. Adia is the epitome of what it means to be a Titan, and she pursues excellence, lives with integrity, and acts with purpose in a respectful, responsible, and safe way. Congratulations, Adia. Hannah. Hannah is an excellent student, receiving straight A's last quarter. She is a hard-working athlete in travel volleyball and dance. She was an active participant last semester in the Rocks Ruling Our Experiences girls program. As her Rocks group leader and counselor, this is not me speaking, I have witnessed her confidence and support, and the support of her peers during their weekly meetings. She bravely spoke at the board office meeting in support of Rocks, speaking about what she learned. It has shown me, she says, "It has shown me that standards and boundaries set by social media personalities are not realistic." Rocks showed me it is okay to not fit into the traits of being that girl you see online. So, congratulations, Hannah. And Grace Anderson. Grace Anderson, the Berea Mid Park Middle School E L teacher, is a great support to our English learning students and their families. Not only is she a support system for students and families with consistent communication, she goes above and beyond to support classroom teachers and language acquisition for our E L students. Mrs. Anderson is also very creative with her ways to connect with families through technology. She is a regular in-building substitute at B M S, and her spare time acts as a mentor for Berea Mid Park High School E L teacher. Thank you, Grace. Our other two recipients, Jill Higgins, a support staff member at Berea Mid Park Middle School, and Emmy Gackey, a fifth grader at the building, were unable to be here tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Tracy Schneid.
We'll get some music for those transitions next time. So, Mrs. Tracy Schneid, I am from Brook Park Elementary School, and I'm here to announce our Be a Titan Award winners. First one up, come on up, is Sophia Nikki Welsh, Nicholas Padella, Mrs. Lori Kapustic, Mrs. Kim Shroka. And then Chelsea Sanford and Dr. Becky Jordan. Not present today is Mrs. Meredith Onduck. So, our first recipient is Sophia Nikki Welsh. Nikki's teacher cannot just say enough about Nikki and how wonderful Nikki is. Nikki is always eager to help, enthusiastic about learning, and a great classmate. Nikki has a sense of humor, takes the opportunity to embrace growth mindset, and when she receives feedback, she takes it without complaint, learns, and grows. She is truly a positive part of our classroom, school, and our community here at B P E. Congratulations, Nikki. She's so proud. Congratulations. Nicholas Padella. Nicholas is truly an amazing boy. He has the natural ability to look out for others and is very nurturing. He has helped friends adapt to the traditional classroom and independently make sure they are looked after each and every day. He embraces the growth mindset and makes his own choices to make sure everyone in his class feels included. Not only is he kind, but he has a booming personality that keeps everyone laughing. I am truly lucky to have Nicholas as one of my students at B P E, and his classroom teacher is truly lucky to have him in the classroom. Nicholas. Next up is Mrs. Lori Kapustic. Lori. Lori is true and loves all her students that she works with. She makes them feel safe and gives them a sense of belonging. When she is not there, these students truly do miss Lori's structure, kindness, and leadership qualities. Not only does Lori support our friends that join a Gen Ed classroom each day, but she supports the teacher as well in the classroom. Lori has helped so many become a better teacher and understand the needs of all types of learners. She is an amazing colleague and an advocate for all our students at B P E. Lori truly is an outstanding instructional associate. Congratulations, Lori. Mrs. Kim Shroka. Kim is an outstanding leader. If you ever need to get advice or be pointed in the right direction, go see Kim. She is a very good listener, an outstanding problem solver, and is here for all our staff and students and family members. Kim always goes above and beyond to support our staff and students. She is a staff member that students build relationships with and that staff go to for guidance. Kim is a leader on our P B I S team and supports everyone with their behavior questions and their guidance. Recently, she has started a caring closet in her classroom, a place where items are available for all students and staff members. I appreciate daily how much Kim does for our staff, students, and families. She is a loyal staff member, and we are so very lucky to have her on our team. Kim, you are a true Titan and one of the best. These next two are actually a trio, and Mrs. Meredith Onduck is not able to be here tonight. So, they will make sure she gets her certificate as well as I will. So, Dr. Becky Jordan and Chelsea Sanford, both of them, along with Meredith Onduck, are very deserving of this award. They came to me with a plan, a plan to create not just one, but two sensory paths for our students at B P E. They had a vision, an idea, and it was very well thought out. They were driven to get it started and excited to see the finished product. All three of them spent time outside of their workday making this a reality for our B P E students. They spent time outside of work hours creating it, stenciling, and painting it at B P E. We are so excited to see, we were so excited because one's done, to see the final product and see our students utilizing it. Thank you so much for all you have done. It is very much appreciated and a great example of what it means to be a Titan. Thank you very much. Next up is Mrs. Terry Grimm and Mr. Dorr from Grindstone.
Good evening. As Mrs. Schneid pointed out, I am Terry Grimm, the principal at Grindstone, and this is Mr. Dorr, our assistant principal. And we have the great pleasure of honoring a couple of our students, staff members, and community members. So, at this time, if Brianna Garcia Romero could come up, Brayden Kruger, Helena Goliat, Judy Tredjikow, and the Marcos Pizza team from Berea.
All right, so we are going to begin with Brianna. Brianna Garcia Romero was nominated by her second-grade teacher, Mrs. Klingon, and her English-language tutor, Ms. Powers. Ms. Klingon and Ms. Powers shared that Brianna moved here in second grade from Honduras, knowing no English. While she couldn't understand her friends and teachers initially, she still came to school with a smile on her face, ready to learn. Brianna has worked hard to not only learn the language, but to teach her peers and teachers the value of her own culture and language. Brianna has faced some difficult challenges, but always meets them with a positive attitude. Her grit and determination speak to what a hard-working student she is. Not only does she give her best effort in school, she also treats others with kindness and respect. She is often the first to offer help or share her things with those in need and never expects anything in return. Overall, she shows what it means to be a true Titan. Brianna will be moving soon, and we know that her future school will be so lucky to have a generous, kind, and hard-working student. We know that she will continue to demonstrate what it means to be a Titan, and she has made all of her teachers so proud. It has been a pleasure to be a small part of her academic journey, and we look forward to hearing all of her successes in the future. Congratulations, Brianna. We are so proud of you. There you go. You can step right over here, honey. All right, next is Brayden Kruger. Brayden is a wonderful example of what it means to be a Titan. Brayden was nominated by his classroom teacher, Ms. Baylow, because he exhibits the following characteristics: accepts challenges, embraces a growth mindset, is honest and trustworthy, and is kind to himself and others. Ms. Baylow shared that Brayden is determined to be successful. He embraces a growth mindset by asking clarifying questions. He participates in class discussions and volunteers to provide answers. He is a member of the ukulele club and eager artist club at school. He allows students to be in groups with him if they do not have a partner. He went above and beyond during the snow days to complete his work and turn it in on time. Brayden is one of the first students to come into the classroom in the morning. He always has a smiling face and a positive attitude to start the day. We are all so very proud of Brayden and are looking forward to watching him continue on this journey of being the very best you. Congratulations to Brayden.
So, I'm going to talk a little bit about Helena and Judy. They're like a combo pair. So, Helena and Judy are valued members of the Titan community at Grindstone and display the characteristics of what it means to be a Titan daily. Both Helena and Judy embrace a growth mindset, accept challenges, support and serve others, and are always kind to self and others. It is because of this that one of your colleagues has nominated you for this honor, and I really couldn't agree more. Helena and Judy have both done an outstanding job with our Grindstone K Kids program. Many fourth-grade students and community members have benefited from their leadership that they have shown from this group over the years. Neither of these ladies have ever shied away from a challenge. Helena and Judy are wonderful role models to our students and have helped grow our Titan community to support and serve others. Last year, they organized our Hearts and Hugs Giving project for area frontline workers. We collected over 800 mugs that were then delivered to the frontline workers, and this year, they have both done an amazing job with our Grab and Go Goodie Bag project for the students at Baldwin Wallace, organizing and delivering over 300 grab-and-go bags for our friends at B W as they approach their finals and midterms. Thank you, Helena and Judy, for being such wonderful and positive role models for our students and staff at Grindstone. Congratulations. Okay. So, next, we would like to recognize the Marcos Pizza's crew from Berea. Heather Cristantello, and I think we have Kelly Brunner, and then Toni Petrella. Okay, so, the Berea Marcos Pizza team was nominated by our school counselor, Mrs. Johnson, also known as Detective Double-O Kindness this school year. When approached about being a part of our attendance incentive programs, they were all on board. Marcos Pizza Berea has agreed to donate one large pizza a week for the entire 21-22 school year to support the Grindstone students. The team believes in the importance of school attendance and has embraced the Perfect Attendance Pizza Award. Each week, they prepare the pizza with a smile. We at Grindstone are so appreciative of their kindness to give back to our community. The students look forward to being a winner each week. Thank you, Marcos Pizza, for being a Titan. Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Rolland from Big Creek.
All right, I don't know if I can follow the Marcos Pizza guy over there, but I will do my best. Good evening. I'm Katie Rolland. I'm the principal at Big Creek Elementary School. We have four people to celebrate this evening from Big Creek, so please join me up here right now. That would be Olivia Mainz, Riley Kanter, Mrs. Lisa Peabody, and Mrs. Anne Howersot. Come on up. Absolutely. While they make their way up, I do want to recognize also Mrs. Cindy Buckholzer. She was our other recipient who could not be here this evening. She's an instructional assistant that just goes above and beyond and fills in in any way, shape, or form. So, we will make sure to recognize Cindy at the building as well. All right, you ready? Okay, our first recipient tonight is Olivia Mainz. And Olivia is a hard-working first grader at Big Creek. She has become a reader and a writer and has transitioned from being an awesome student to also an awesome big sister at the end of the day. I've had the opportunity to watch Olivia every day help her preschool brother navigate the whole building and come to the car dismissal every day, and she takes that responsibility very seriously, and it speaks volumes to her wise beyond her year's leadership. So, she is a positive role model already in first grade, and her teachers and Ms. Frimlin and myself think she is just an awesome young lady. So, congratulations, Olivia, for being a Titan. All right, our next recipient is Riley Kanter. And I have had the privilege, this is my sixth year at Big Creek, and Riley has been there the whole time as well. And I think even when I first met Riley, she had this smile and energy about her, and as a fourth grader, it has not diminished one bit. So, I'm very happy to celebrate that. Riley is a student with a heart of gold. She helps in moments when, it doesn't matter how quickly, she's, "I'm here to help." She helps her teacher, she helps in extended care, and she'll even help me out in the mornings. Sometimes I run over to extended care and say, "Riley, can you help me with something?" And off she goes. She brings a smile to the hallways and the classroom, and again, here's another young lady who has been a role model for many. So, Riley, congratulations for being a Titan. Right? It's like contagious. All right. The next two. So, first here is Lisa Peabody. And when we complete these forms, we look at all the different things that fit Titan criteria. And this one, it says embraces a growth mindset, is honest, trustworthy, kind to self and others, and supports and serves others. And when I think about all of those descriptors, I think Lisa for sure serves others. So, here's the little blurb. Lisa has been part of the reading intervention team for kindergarten through our third-grade teams. She continues to provide small-group targeted reading intervention for her students and is an important part of supporting students every day. She has added new programs, she has embedded new assessments, and has embraced all of the new materials to really customize a learning experience for each one of her students. She does this each day with a kind, positive, supportive focus for every student that comes her way. And really, even just last week, Lisa came to me and identified a kindergartner who is not part of her caseload right now, but she said, "I think I can help. I think I can make a connection." And she did, and she continues to. So, Lisa, thank you for being a Titan. Congratulations. And Anne. All right, so, Anne, there's so many different descriptors I could use for Anne as well. So, Anne is one of our intervention specialists, and she has been with us for a few years now. And she supports, right now, students with quite a variety of needs. She's the first one to bring the team together to problem-solve as we've tried to figure out staffing and coverage and needs and everything. Anne's like, "Well, let's just put it together and sit down and figure out a solution." She is the first to reach out to those tough times. So Anne, thank you and congratulations for being a Titan. All right, and with that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Mark Smithberger with Berea Mid Park High School.
Good evening. It's certainly my pleasure to be here this evening, and congratulations to all the other award recipients and recognized students and faculty. What a great night to be a part of this and see how many awesome people we have in our district. So congratulations. At this time, I'd like to call up three people from the high school, Andy Dinnerville, Ian Taylor, and Shannon Press Lloyd. If you guys can come on up, it'd be a great...
So each quarter, so we're tasked with the idea of recognizing some of our amazing students and staff here at the high school, and we truly are blessed of how many great students we have, the 1,800 and about 200 adults work here, so about 2,000 people every day. So figuring out who to recognize is not an easy task, but we take a lot of pride in it. So Ian's here tonight, he accepts challenges, he is relentless and resilient. Ian is an outstanding student, is involved in numerous school activities, he's one of the rare three sport athletes we have here at the high school. He had a personal goal of attending a service academy with the military. That is a very difficult thing to accomplish. A lot of kids have that goal throughout the country, but it's tough to pull off. Well, Ian pulled it off. Due to his hard work and relentless pursuit of his goal, Ian has been accepted to the U.S. Bercham Marines, and he'll be reporting this summer. Congratulations. We often talk about standing by what you believe in and being willing to stand up for when it's tough. It's easy to stand for what you believe in when it's easy and everyone's supporting it, but it's hard to be a role model when things really aren't that easy. And our next award recipient did just that. Andy observed unfortunately a student altercation in the hallway. Before adults could get there, Andy stepped in and broke it up. She showed responsibility and courage and helped get involved to keep our school safe. So Andy, congratulations, we really appreciate your desire to be a role model. Thank you. We'll try to recognize this one adult who works in the building. And this time, we're very proud to recognize Shannon Press Lloyd. Shannon is a science teacher here. She accepts challenges, she embraces a growth mindset, and supports and serves others. Mrs. Press Lloyd is hardworking and dynamic in her teaching. She provides engaging and challenging lessons for all students. As a colleague, she is always willing to help others, share ideas, and provide a word of encouragement. She truly exemplifies what it means to be a Titan, and we're proud you're on our team. Shannon Press Lloyd. And again, thanks for having us here this evening. Proud to introduce Tammy Clammer from Snow School. Tammy, come on up.
Saving the best for last, Toni Tyus, if you would like to please come up. My sweet Toni. Toni has faced many adversities and overcome them with grace. She's achieved Level 5 status at Snow School, which is the highest level of proving excellence and growth. She consistently displays a dedication to her schoolwork as well as her personal growth. She's a pleasure to have in class and is an asset to the Titan community. She's always willing to help others, and she is dependable and represents what it means to be a Titan. She has a bright future and will continue to do great things. Congratulations Toni.
You can see, we have some great things going on in the Berea City School District. Really proud of all of our students, staff, and community members to help make our district so great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of our recipients. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you don't want to, you don't have to, and now would be a good time.
Next, we have public participation, and our first speaker is Dave Chekarelli.
So my word of the day is gonna be why. I'm just very curious why you always have everybody leave or say that they can leave because they're gonna leave. They should stay and hear what parents have to say, or whoever has to say anything. Also, I want to know why we need to keep on outsourcing organizations for our school district, like the Diversity Center, like Right at School, like the one we just found out about yesterday, which is the... The Bell? The Bell? What is it? The Bell?
The Batel for Kids.
Yes, thank you. The Batel for Kids. See, it's so new, I can't even remember it. And they're about to do a survey. I don't know if they're gonna do a survey like they did for the Diversity Center back last year. I don't know what questions they're gonna have, or they're gonna have questions like the gender, what gender are you, what sexuality are you, what spirituality are you? Another question I have is why do we think it's okay to have places like this when they have, they're funded by the Zuckerbergs and the Bill Gates Foundation? Just very curious why we have to keep outsourcing when we already have, we have like a D, I believe, average for our school, or two stars, whatever you want to call it. And I'm just, I don't know why, we need to work on education before we start working on everything else, like spirituality, or gender, or race, because kids are here to be kids, and I don't think trying to figure out what gender they are, or what they think they are, is gonna make any difference to get better grades. Thank you.
This is in part a continuation of my previous presentation, which only three minutes didn't have enough time to do so, about liabilities. These are liabilities for any government organization. I used to work for another school that had some issues there, but these are, under state law, bad faith, malicious intent, wanton, reckless, or willful negligence. I was not able to finish the different negligence issues, but I will have to start back on But wanton negligence, reckless negligence, as well as willful negligence can sometimes be part of bad faith. Bad faith is, according to Black's Law Dictionary, the opposite of good faith, generally implying or involving actual constructive fraud, or designed to mislead or deceive another, or neglect or refusal to fulfill some duty. I was reminding you of this of the last school board meeting where, on a pair of presentations, some false information was provided. However, Ms. Wheeler, with some of the things that were said in your own presented, presentation, you're not, you are immune to bad faith, whether it's lack of knowledge or knowing merely false information, as it's considered government speech. The fact that you said that the private and charter schools are not beholden to the state school board standards for the curriculum was false. All state and private schools and charter schools in the state of Ohio are obligated to follow them. That includes the school that I worked at, there's three of its kind in the state of Ohio, and all the funds for that school is federal in origin. We had to go by this exact same regulations any school in the state of Ohio is required to follow. Please make sure in the future that you accurately present things. I don't know whether it's lack of knowledge or whatever, but it is an aspect of bad faith. Now, wanton, willful, reckless negligence, these are currently three separate issues in the state of Ohio.
Mr. Tuck, your three minutes are up, and I'd just like to add, it was not incorrect information. They follow the state standards, as we do. The difference is accountability. They are not held to the same accountability measures as public schools. Thank you. Our next speaker is James Gresh.
I wanted to know, I think the public has a right to know, because this is a hot topic in the country, college sports, and I assume it'll trickle down to high school sports, biological men competing as women in sports. I see you take great pride by having the records of girls and boys' sports out in the hallways, as you should, and I'd hate to see that destroyed by a biological male competing in women's sports in the Berea City School District. So I think it'd be important, I think each one of you ought to publicly state what your stance is on that issue. I think the public has a right to know, as Berea City School Board members, where you Before I go any further, I want to thank Steve Dockman publicly for his calm leadership previously on this board, his voice of reasons, voice of morals, values, common sense, which I believe is completely lacking on this school board as currently exists. Hopefully, our new school board member there isn't a leftist liberal like the rust that is here, but we'll see. I assume you are, because they all voted for you, but hopefully not. I'll remind this board, as Steve did last week, three board members in San Francisco were recalled, and San Francisco, liberal San Francisco, recalled members for their radical views, and that's the path this school board seems to be taking, so I would warn you. Also GOP governor won in Virginia, surprisingly, and you know what platform he won on? Anti-CRT teachings in schools. And you call it now social emotional learning, which sounds to me like you're just hiding because you don't like the word CRT, so you call it social emotional learning. You're here to teach kids, you're not here to get in kids' heads, like Dave said, their genders, their sexuality. You have no business getting in kids' heads for that, that's the parents' jobs. And if there's issues and kids bring it up in school, you bring their parents in and get them involved immediately. We don't know what kind of counselors you have here that are speaking to our kids on that topic. Do they share our morals, the parents' morals or values? Nobody knows. We have no right to get into their heads. I'm sorry?
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have superintendent's update.
Okay, I just have a few quick things. One, in my update with the board on Friday, I just wanted to let you know, I didn't hear from everyone, I'm assuming it's okay. Dr. Smithberger in high school, we had originally proposed to the board that we were gonna have a non-school day for our students who were not testing, state testing, on April 7th. We're gonna move that day to April 8th, so as long as there's no, the board doesn't object to that, then I'm gonna go ahead and tell Dr. Smithberger to go ahead and move forward with that.
Can you repeat that again?
So originally, I didn't look at my, in my update to you guys, but in an update, I had indicated to you that with the biology state test and the number of students taking it, we were not gonna have school that day, and it was going to be Thursday, April 7th. Dr. Smithberger's requesting that we actually move that to Friday, April 8th instead.
So the 7th is school?
7th there will be school, 8th there won't be no, and they're gonna work with the kids on, that's gonna be days where if kids have the opportunity to go do college visits or anything like that, that we're gonna strongly encourage them to go take those on that day. strongly encourage them to go take those on that day. Job shadowing, whatever else that they may need to do, but they'll give kids some options and, they don't have to, but it, it will be a non-instructional day for all students. Okay? Everybody good with that? All right, so, I don't know if he's still out there or not, but, there he is. All right, Mark, you're, you're ready to go ahead with that. The other thing, just the only other, two other things. One is that it should have hit your mailboxes already, that we have gone back to, we're doing a, we're going to try to do a quarterly newsletter that will go to every resident, not just every parent, in all three cities. So that should have hit your mailboxes today, if it isn't today, hasn't hit today?
I haven't been home.
Okay. So it should be, I know Christina had it, they all mail it out through the company, so it should be coming here soon, if you haven't gotten it already. You guys got to see the sneak peek of it in my update on Friday. So that will be coming. And just the last thing, it's been really a blessing for our families since the pandemic has started, with the summer food service program. The USDA is no longer going to provide free breakfast and lunch. And unfortunately, I mean, even if they were going to do it through the school year, that would be great, we were hoping that we could at least squeeze out the summer again, but we will not be able to do that. So if you remember, the last two summers, our food service, our nutrition service staff has done an amazing job of providing meals to families, free meals to families in our district, over the summer. So we will not be able to do that this summer. And I thought, I said to Brianna, like, can we squeeze it out to like June 3rd? We can't. So, I mean, to, it actually goes through June 31st, but it's really the last day of your school. So we have to finish it on June 3rd. And then, as far as we know for next year, too, that students will not be eligible for free breakfast or lunch, other than students who are on a free and reduced lunch option.
Do the students who are eligible for free lunch and breakfast during the school year, will they be supplied over the summer?
No.
It's just Monday of school until the first day in the fall?
Correct.
Can you repeat the question for people that were, because I don't think the microphone...
Yeah, Dr. Postal asked if that would, if any of our students who receive free and reduced lunch normally throughout a school year, would they be eligible for free breakfast or lunch during the summer? And the answer is no. And that's all I have, unless you have any other questions with my update, which some of it we're going to cover tonight.
Okay, the consent agenda, it's recommended that items D-3 to D-15 be approved as part of the consent agenda, unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved. Second.
Everything on, there, most of what's on the consent agenda are routine consent agenda items. We just, we do actually have a number of retirements, and some of them vary as far as when they're at, their retirements actually take place. Ellen Burns, who's at the high school as an intervention specialist, she has been in the district since 1993. Joseph Ferranti, who's at the middle school, music teacher, he's been in the district since 2001. Terry Solomon, who's at, a middle school teacher, she's been in the district since 1991. Dee Farmer, who is our custodian at BPE, she has been there since 1994. Eugene Jackson, who's one of our custodians at the middle school, has been there since Karen Mulcher, who's an intervention associate, has been there since 1994. And one of our bus drivers, who has served in the district for 40 years, since 1982, and I know I won't say her name, right? It's Pam, how do you say Pam's last name? Sinotowski?
Sinoweski.
What is it?
Sinoweski.
There you go, Sinoweski. She has been here for 40 years, and she actually was, is retiring at the end of this month. So again, just all of them going off into retirement, we wish them all the best.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 16, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the current minimum wage rate for the state of Ohio to be enacted for the purpose of compensation of time worked for the students enrolled and employed in the Berea Mid Park High School Connections Work-Study Program for the 21-22 school year.
So moved. Second.
I think we just have one, I'm trying to find my notes here, we just have one student on that list. And that was an item that we had approved by the board, probably in the fall. So now, yeah, we're just employing those students now.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number 17 is a second reading of many policies. I'd like to first bring up the public participation one. It's the first one listed. I'd like to suggest a slight change after some conversations on, do you have it up there?
Yeah.
At the end of the first paragraph, where it says, "In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the board shall provide a period for public participation at every scheduled regular meeting, including scheduled work sessions of the board, but excluding any special meetings." That's what it said previously. But after some comments at our last meeting and conversation since, I'd like to amend it to say, "Unless otherwise specified in the special meeting notice, the board will publish rules to govern such participation in board meetings." So basically, just when the topic necessitates it, that we should allow it. For example, we said at our last meeting, I believe that we had a special meeting a few years ago, because we needed a boiler at BPM pronto. That really wouldn't necessitate public comments, but if it was something else that came up, that would. Is everybody, is that on?
I think that sounds reasonable, just so that the board can conduct business expeditiously when it needs to.
Okay. Everyone's okay with that? Okay. The other thing, does not have to be in the policy, but I wanted to suggest it. As I've been going to different OSBA trainings and just other school boards that have observed in their public participation, they have two periods every meeting, one at the beginning and one at the end. The one at the beginning is specifically for agenda items, and then the one at the end is for non-agenda items. And again, it's for what you said, for the continuity of business. Each one being the same amount of time, as we have said in our policy, or can be changed, but it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be written into the policy, I checked with our council, but I just wanted to suggest it, maybe something we could discuss, discuss further about having. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. All right, are there any questions on any of the other policies?
Did we, as far as the public partation, public participation goes, did we, the legitimate interest section, anyone having a legitimate interest?
I think that's the recommended language by Neola.
Okay. I would hope that we don't narrow that too much, because I don't want to exclude anyone who wants to step forward and share with us their three minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else on that one, or any of the other ones?
I, I'm assuming that these suggested changes are, these are being recommended by, is it Neola?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so, again, I'm happy to accept what the best practices are for school boards.
Neil, you did?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
So do you want, are you, are you taking the one, do we need to amend?
She has it up there.
The revision to it? I have the revision. Okay. All right, then you can vote on it.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept the public participation policy as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call on that one, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
And then now, can we have a motion to accept all of the other ones?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Okay, number 18, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the revised outside permits and rental rates for district facilities use, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
So, again, the information I shared with you in your update on Friday, this is a way for us, actually, so, Mr. Dre's brought this to me, Mr. Swaczka, I can't remember who else sat down, and we started talking about taking a look at our, at our rentals and our rates, and we actually, the revising our rates, bottom line is, we were creating rates where no one's using our facilities, right? And we believe that we've got great facilities, we want people to be able to use them, and it's also a way for us to generate some money that can go towards our permanent improvement projects. So for example, if someone rents out Berea Mid Park Middle School, the gym, whatever, what we did is we went to Jill and said, we want, this hasn't been done before, we want to create a separate account. So anytime there's any kind of a rental of any of our facilities, it goes into a separate PI account. I think normally Jill, it goes right back into our general fund, right? So which could go to anything. So we're going to say, someone, we, we contract with somebody to use one of our gyms, we're going to take whatever money we get from there. We, I think it already happened here, somebody used the auditorium, and so we already told Jill, that money should go into a separate account. So what can we use that for? We can use it for here. Let's say something happens, you know, that there needs to be repairs to this auditorium. Let's say we need, I'll give you a good example, is the auditorium at the middle school, right? So those, lots of those kinds of repairs and things like that are put off, because we just don't have the money, right? The general fund money, it's going to some other things, it doesn't become a priority. So this gives us a way to actually check our rates, it gives Mr. Swaczka the opportunity, it gives him some flexibility to negotiate prices and overall rentals with people if we need to, so that we can actually start to generate some money to go towards some of those projects that we haven't been able to do in the past. One of the things, though, that we make special note of, even with rental rates or any changes that we would do, if people use any of the facilities, our community and our students come first, right? So we know that when scheduling goes on, the athletics goes first, right? If anything's going on in the auditorium, our kids, the play, the musical, the choir concerts, the band concerts, whatever, those take precedence. So it's after all those things are done, then what can we do? And then that money will go to some really good things that we need some funds for, and we don't have the ability to do that right now, with the way the rates are.
Neil, did you have a question?
I have a separate one on page three, there's summer permits, and then there's a line in red, there are no outside permits. Is that outside facilities, or outside groups? I'm assuming it's outside, like, use of the grounds?
Yeah, so the, it's during that time, there's no outright, no one's using our facilities during those times, right? That's the way that's written, correct, Mike?
Correct.
Yes.
It puts it in the blackout areas, we have to do some internal work, so...
They're not allowed.
I'll make them better.
So, oh, no, it's not outdoor permits, it's out, it's what we call the outside permits, it'd be somebody, yes, correct.
If we could insert maybe groups or outside entities or something, I think just to clarify it.
Okay, we can, we know internally what that is, but yes, we can do that, because this is, this is located on our website, so we'll fix that.
That's fine.
Okay.
I think it's vague, too vague.
Perfect, yep, good suggestion.
Is that just this summer, or the summer of 2023, or all years during that period, it's not going to be able to be used?
It's, I have a blackout pretty close on it.
Yes.
Okay.
So we may...
Because of work being done?
Yes.
So is that, this is listed as 2023, is it supposed to be 22?
We probably just need to adjust that, but it's not a specific year. I mean, it's from year to year, so we don't have to go and change the document.
Okay.
Is there a plan to sort of push this out to the community, or will this just largely be shared with groups that we already have ongoing relationships with?
Yes.
I'm wondering how aggressively we'll be trying to generate.
Yes, they'll, they'll find it. Dance groups are always looking for a place, right? I mean, so they, they look, and they know. They're on your website, every time, you know, anybody's coming and looking for something, they go right to school websites, and they know where to find it, so.
And, I mean, the money for, the money that we bring in isn't all profit, because we have to pay custodians to be here, correct?
No. If, if it's not, if our custodians aren't already here, and if it's something that would need a custodian, that's put into their fees.
Okay.
Yes.
Right.
So it, I mean, we, Mike, what was the number that you gave me? You said if we, if we just did a basketball league, would you say it was $12,000?
Yeah. So we, we will, we're not going to rent the facility, we have coverage in a lot of the buildings, and so that's what we want to do, when our kids aren't using it, we already have custodial coverage.
Yep.
If there's additional custodial costs to resolve, that would get charged into the organization.
Okay. So it will be no cost to us.
Okay. It's a lot of work when those basketball leagues are here. I've been here, well, not in this building, but when I was at the high school and, and the old middle school.
Yes.
Any other questions on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 19, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between the Berea City School District and Columbus State Community College for college credit plus courses taught during the 22-23 school year, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved. Second. It's just a yearly agreement for CCP courses.
Okay. Columbus, roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 20, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the quote from Royal Business Services for Chromebooks, cases, and additional charges, chargers for the kindergarten and first grade students at Brook Park Elementary, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved. Second.
Just the next two items are new tech, are new tech purchases.
Question.
Yeah.
So this is for the kindergarten, first grade, in a couple of years, if somebody were to move in the district as a third or fourth grader, do we then, do we have other...
Yeah. Devices, yes. Yeah. And the money for, for the first, for that K1 purchase is actually coming out of Title I money. So that is not a district general fund or an ESER fund purchase.
Do kindergarten and first grade have Chromebooks now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Additional.
Mm-hmm. Well, they get their, through their life, right? And then, so these are, these are buying all new, so this, this is at BPE, will have gone through buying every kid at BPE a brand-new Chromebook.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 21, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the quotes from Royal Business Equipment for Lenovo 100E Chromebooks and Lenovo ThinkPads for the use of the students in the district, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Same thing, just replenishing our Chromebook supplies.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number 22, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the agreement between the Berea City School District and Connect for technology services to support the district student information system, Infinite Campus, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved. Second.
This is just us actually contracting with the, with, with Connect, they will provide us support in the district with EMIS, anything InfoOhio, any of our internet services, and then everything that we do with Infinite Campus, and they will provide a cloud service for us.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 23, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the quote from Penn Foster for the Rise Up Program, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
So this is, and I brought this, I'll, I'll give this to you guys, so with a class of 2023 and alternative pathways to graduation, this is just a... this is just a program for students who might need that alternative pathway, who don't necessarily pass their Algebra, English, ELA II class. So this is an alternative path for students to get the points that they need for an industry-approved credential. Typically, those are, a lot of those are done through Polaris, but this actually will be an in-house program. It focuses on foundational employability skills, mostly within the retail field. So it's, it's real life and it will give, it's an alternative for students to meet their graduation pathway.
You said who didn't pass ELA I and II, did you mean the class or the test?
The test.
Okay.
Thank you. They still have to get their credits for classes, right? Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number 24, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the quote from Transio for graduation readiness software as shown in the exhibit.
So moved. Second.
So with new state, with state, anytime there's a state mandate, you know, they come in and they pay for everything, right? Okay, no. So with the change of, um, that where students have to earn designated seals also for graduation, the problem has come is, how do you track them, right? Because it can be a nightmare. So Transio is just a program that will help our students and guidance counselors track when a student receives a seal. So this is, this, this document has not gone out to our kiddos yet. This is something that Christina Caprada's worked on with the high school guidance counselors. So this is like fresh off the, off the copier and I thought, oh, it's perfect to give it to you guys tonight. So it just gives you, it shows you on here, it'll integrate with Infinite Campus and it'll just be, um, give our folks a much easier, more manageable way to track, to track our seals because there's really nothing out there, so. And this is something I know that most school districts are partnering with Transio. We got a little bit of a better rate because they're working through the ESC of Cairo County and you get a little bit because you've got more schools that are working with them.
So how soon will this be ready for the kids? Will the kids get to see it or do they have to meet with a counselor in order to find out, you know, where they are?
They, they meet with a counselor, they meet with their counselor every single year.
Right, but I mean, are they going to be able to log into this to see themselves? Or do they have to meet with someone in order to, for them to share it with them?
Transio's for the adults, not for the kids, am I right or am I wrong?
Well, both sides.
Okay.
So students can use it, um, the academics, we have, that's our transcript. We're looking for like the service CEO, type of building, who can have access to, communicate directly with employers, maybe service reps, and the students, so all the documents are on one spot as opposed to kind of a collection of spreadsheets and paper documents that you might have volunteered, you have a word, your paycheck from your job is there. So it's all on top of one house, and anyone can see it and it allows to be with the community as well.
There you go.
There's also a survey component in there that they have to do the seals. Like your boss has to tell us if we need functionality, workarities, et cetera.
So at what point do the counselors meet with the kids? At the beginning of every school year and tell them where they are? Or how do they know?
Uh, this is relative to us, for the current classes. So they meet when they do the scheduling. So they've done the scheduling stuff, we're kind of doing the scheduling now for the years, so they had the opportunity to meet with counselors. We're not overly concerned about your seals, you have to get kind of into your software. Because you should get a lot of them, honestly, I hate to just work with them, by doing normal academic stuff. It's the last 20%, we have to very target the plan in those last two years to make sure that your seals, and that's where that Rise Up Program comes as well, because that's, that's step two of the process. Step one's credits, step two is proficient in Algebra I, English II, that exam, or mature credential, which we talked about here, or military background. And then the seals are the step three, and they're 11 seals you can get. I fear the mic would like to talk about that.
I just hope, hopefully everybody heard you.
It's by your hair.
It says, um, earn two of the following, can you earn, can a student earn more than two?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, they have, they have to have two, one has to be an Ohio seal and one has to be a local seal.
Kind of reminds me a little bit of the academic letter, where you were earning points for different achievements.
So this is not our current seniors, but our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors and beyond, unless they change it again.
This is.
For permanent and long-term, so.
Okay.
So I'm not sure why they did that adjustment, they made that adjustment more recently to long-term graduation candidates.
It's just one more thing to change.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 25, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the quote from bleachers on demand for seating during the 2022 commencement ceremony as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, this is going to be commencement here coming up and this is just the, um, this is for us to go ahead and order or pay for our, the bleachers that we will have out on the front lawn for commencement.
Even though commencement isn't the topic here, just the bleachers, but I know there's a lot of concern in the community about it being outdoors on our front lawn with Bagley Road. I mean, can you give us some idea of what the plan is?
It might come to speak, he and I talked about this today and said this may come up tonight, so. I think I will say this, that Dr. Smithberger and Mr. Muha have done an amazing job of planning and I, as Dr. Smithberger is going to share with you, any of the concerns that people have, he's come up, he's, he's really addressed them all very, in a, in a, in a way that we still feel incredibly comfortable that we're having commencement on the front lawn.
So we have worked over the last 12 months, I should rephrase that, the last 10 months since summer to get ready for commencement 22. Uh, it'll be on the lawn, uh, we are going to put out an entire packet of kind of FAQ early next month. We need to get final sign-offs on a couple of things, uh, like board approval for bleacher before we start putting out information. Uh, we think it's going to be as good as anything else we could have had outside. So as I talked to Mrs. Wheeler earlier today, I think it's important to remember as we kind of go down this path, last summer we started planning for commencement, we were not able to book indoor venues. That was at a time where COVID was still a thing. So when people were like, well, why don't you just go somewhere, go indoors? Well, there aren't a lot of indoor venues, and then what we've used historically here at the Wolstein Center, they weren't booking events at the time, and they actually were not even returning our calls at the time. So that, that really wasn't an option, like to go down there whether, whether we wanted to or not. So we came down to, um, when we started talking about it, we're not going to be there, we're going to be outside, what are the options? So option one would have been go back to Buyer's Field. Palmer was a nice host for us, but it's still someone else's venue and we thought being on our own property, our own place might be a great, a great experience for us as opposed to driving a town over to, to have commencement. We're also, once again, they were great hosts, but we're tied to their schedule, their dates, their times, et cetera, which was a little problematic for us because last year we had to book kind of with them to get some of the rental rates and get things hooked up because they had other events on their field, like their own commencement, Tri-Cs commencement, things that we had no control over because like with rental fees, we're just a client. Or the third option we explored was go to Finney Stadium. It's a large stadium. The issue with Finney isn't Baldwin Wallace, Baldwin Wallace is a great partner for us with this. They were giving us the facility rent-free. The problem is for us is they said, you have to do what we do. We said, well, what do you do? They said, well, we're going to field cover for the entire surface of the field. We don't want your kids or our kids on the, or I should say young adult students, on the track or turf. I said, okay. Well, the full field cover is over $60,000. I'll repeat that again, over 60,000, the number was 65,000 for the full field cover. So that's not, we don't have that kind of money, so what do we, don't rent the whole thing? Well, you can rent one for 35,000, only covers part of the field. And, but now you're packing all the commencement people together on one spot. That didn't include stage rental, chair rental, and everything else. So we quickly said, you know what, thanks, but no offense. We appreciate you giving it to it rent-free, but we can't afford what you're doing, which is fair because we're, they're doing it themselves. So now we ended up in front of the school, which we think is a really good venue still. So we're renting bleachers for 2,800 guests. And they will be, our students will be facing the school as they sit. The bleachers will be horseshoot around the students, the stage will be kind of in front of the flagpole there. Uh, we've rented the same audio and, uh, video we had last year at Buyer's Field. Uh, they are very much equipped to handle that kind of event. In fact, they handle large-scale concerts of thousands, thousands of people. So we think they're more than capable and they proved it last year, they do a great job with it. We have already talked to the city about options with, with traffic. Last year at Buyer's Field, we were also near Parma Hospital. At one point ambulance went by and we stopped during the ambulance going by. So when we read a kid's name or a student's name, it's heard. So we're planning on the same thing this year, we'll talk to our graduation readers. Uh, we've worked out a parking plan with both the high school, our parking of where our staff's going to be, kids will be, we're going to use Baldwin Wallace's facility. If the numbers hold, which they're going to, because we were limited to 2,800 seats, which is seven tickets per graduate, we're going to end up, quite frankly, with a smaller crowd than we did at football on a Friday night. So we know we can house the parking, uh, we're going to encourage people to carpool, like not with their neighbors per se, but like, hey, if you're coming to commencement and you're bringing grandma and grandpa, ride in the same car possibly. We're also going to use both as pull-out guests.
Mark, just a reminder too that BW is out by the time we have commencement too. So BW is not in session by the time we have commencement, which football games, football season, they're in, so.
So we're looking at those things, quite frankly, if every person came in one car to commencement, which we know is not possible because it's tickets, et cetera, we could all park here on this physical footprint, be fine. So we, we think it's, it's as good a plan as there's going to be. I don't control the weather, believe it or not, I'm close to that. So we have rain dates, uh, that'll be the thing we, probably the biggest things that I hear are the three things. Why didn't you go to Wolstein Center, which I think we've explained, we couldn't go to Wolstein Center. Two, uh, what about the noise? I think we're going to control for the best we can, we've already talked to the Berea Police about having multiple officers here, so if someone decides to keep laying on their horn repeatedly, they'll get a noise violation. Hope that doesn't come to that, but they certainly have, will have officers here. And the third thing would be handicap accessibility, and we're absolutely planning for that. We're increasing handicap parking on both side lots here. Uh, we will use the, the bus turnout and the parent pickup as drop-off line on both sides. So you can drop people off if you don't want grandma to walk, even though she may not be technically handicapped. Uh, and we will have wheelchair accessibility, walker accessibility by putting down, uh, basically four-by-eight plywood or, and carpet on top of it, so they can have easy access to get across there. So I think we're accounting for everything we need to account for, uh, we can't control the weather, obviously. I really think it's going to be a nice ceremony, um, and Mrs. Wheeler was way too kind to me a few moments ago. Mr. Muha's done the vast majority of the plan work and the legwork on this. He's worked really hard to put everything together, he's walked that space probably more times than he wants to admit and prep with all the different vendors and people coming in. And quite frankly, I'm really excited to have us in, in the front yard of the school with the building as that, as the backdrop for, for graduation. Other questions that I can answer or, or kind of help with right now? And as I've been telling parents, they've called me or emailed me, I've just called them and said, I don't want to put an 18 paragraph email together, I'll just call you and talk to you. We are going to put out an entire packet of FAQs like we have the last couple of years for graduation because it is different. That'll come out, uh, Mrs. Wheeler, I think I meet with her April the 4th to get kind of her final input and make sure she's good with the plan and that'll come out to parents immediately thereafter. Assuming she's good with the plan.
Did you say the kids are on the grass? Or is that where, the kids are on the grass facing the school? So then all the, the families would be on the bleachers on the concrete?
Uh, no, they'll be in the grass as well, horseshoot around the, they'll be in a horseshoe shape around the students.
Okay, so where's the stage?
Yes, there's a stage and a screen as well. Uh, this will be the closest our parents have ever been to our graduates since the schools have merged, for sure. So, uh, Wolstein Center certainly, we were on the stage floor and we were up in the stands last fall, or last, I should, last spring. We, kids were on the track, we were on the turf, parents were in the stands, now we'll all be in the general vicinity of each other. Uh, so it'll be as close as you've ever been to your, your potential graduate.
Last year's graduation was incredible, yeah, it was a little warm, I'll admit, um, but it was.
Mrs. Ferris, I can't control the weather again.
No, I know, no, I know. But it was, you know, having it outside was such a refreshing change. I always loved graduation, I always loved commencement, it's one of my favorite parts of this job. But doing it outside was definitely the best way to do it. So fingers crossed that everything goes as we wish it goes.
I've talked to people this weekend from other districts and they've held outdoor after holding indoor and the vast majority of the parents feel it's much better. Weather can't control, sound you're not always going to control, but they've also held it like at Kent State and other facilities and the families have enjoyed the outdoor. So I think, I think it's a very nice approach.
Yeah, I say it's, um, and certainly, Dr. Postal, that's our approach as well. But I don't want, I don't want that to be said as if we're not taking it super serious because the students graduating get one graduation.
Oh, no, I think it's.
Absolutely.
I think it's being planned as well, I think it's going to be a very good ceremony.
Thank you, and I just want to make, I owe my, to the parents who are watching, didn't think it's just, well, if it doesn't work out, we'll do something different next year. Now, we, we only have one chance for your kids, so that's why I make sure that people didn't feel like this is our trial balloon and.
No, no, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Treasurer's update.
Um, I wanted to update the board tonight on something we've been working on for about two years now in the district with our health insurance plan. Um, we, as everybody knows, Southwest General is in, you know, in our district. We've been working with them and Medical Mutual, who is our main carrier, to do a direct contract with, with Southwest General. Basically what that means is our employees, if they choose to utilize Southwest General, they can go there and have a smaller co-pay, they can avoid a deductible, avoid any out-of-pocket expenses, and basically we get discounts, um, because we're direct contracting with, um, Southwest General. Better discounts than what we would get on Medical Mutual's contract. Um, we're starting this plan as of April 1st. What that means for the employee, again, it saves them some money, but it also saves, it's going to save the district money. Southwest General is making, you know, because we're steering business towards them. Um, in the consortium, us, Strongsville, and Olmsted Falls are going to start this on April 1st. Fairview and Avon will start later in the year. As you can imagine, we're the schools that benefit the most from the Southwest General because we have the most people that go there. So we will begin that on April 1st. We are working with the unions right now, um, they're getting the word out to all their participants to tell them of the new tier that we'll have, the enhancement of the plan. We're very excited for this. And again, it should help us with our overall cost and it should bring those down, it should help the plan itself. So with, again, this has been about two years in the making and we're very excited to get to this point.
Great, thank you. Okay, the consent agenda, it's recommended that items E3 to E6 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved. Second.
All routine items on the consent agenda tonight, I did want to point out one item under the appropriations, since Mrs. Zirke asked, the food service increase of 450,000, why so high? Uh, Mrs. Wheeler talked about the free lunch and breakfast program that's been happening across the United States this year. Basically, because so many of our students are participating in the free breakfast and lunch program, we've spent more money. But conversely, on the flip side, we've, we've get reimbursement for every single one of those kiddos that's eating breakfast and lunch. So the food service fund is, is conversely receiving more revenue because a lot more kids are eating. Next school year, when we go back to the only approved free and reduced lunch students, it'll look more like 2019, pre-pandemic standards. So the, the food service budget will come down and she will have, um, a nice cash balance to help us get through several more years in case something happens. So I just wanted to point out that, that large appropriation increase.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number seven, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the contract of services attached below between St. Mary Catholic School and the Summ-
attached below between St. Mary Catholic School and the Summit Educational Service Center for Employment Services.
So moved.
Second.
This is a routine contract for St. Mary's, they, this is for next school year for employment services, we are just their fiscal agent, so we are getting this approved through the board for them.
Roll call please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Urquy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes of the February 20th, 2022 regular meeting, the February 25th special meeting, and the March 7th work session as shown in the exhibits.
We need to split out the 22nd.
Okay, so let's do the 22nd first.
Thank you.
So it's recommended we approve the minutes of just the February 22nd regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes or additions?
Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Urquy?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Epstein.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
He changed it to Epstein.
The Epstein.
Okay, Christine. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes of the February 25th special meeting and March 7th work session.
So moved. Second.
Are there any changes or additions?
Roll call please.
Mrs. Urquy?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Epstein.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number two, be it resolved that the following board members to be appointed to serve a term on the following committee, Rick Mack on the Safety and Security Committee.
I'm sorry, did we do the, oh, that we did those two meetings together?
Yeah, we did it together.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, okay, so let me go back, be it resolved that the following board members to be appointed to serve a term on the following committee, Rick Mack on Safety and Security Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Urquy?
Yes.
Legislative update, House Bill 290 and 327 have, are not scheduled for any committee meetings right now, but we will continue to have updates as necessary, are there any Board of Education committee reports?
Very quickly, the, there is a benefit for the Education Foundation, there will be a preview night to see Mary Poppins on April 7th, tickets are $30 a person, and proceeds will benefit the Education Foundation, so I hope as many people as can attend will, and thank you to everyone who supported the Education Foundation auction recently.
Neil?
Smart, and we were able to meet with Mrs. Wheeler and Mr. Timmons from Polaris, and I think there was a good exchange of what the districts, the two separate districts do and how they can work together, and I think a couple of items were found on both parties to look into the future for the benefit of more students academically.
Great.
I thought it was, I thought it was a very productive session.
Okay.
Okay, any Board of Education comments?
I just want to thank the building principals for sharing their newsletters each week, I enjoy reading the updates from all of the schools, and very much appreciated that at Big Creek there was a note that students who are observing Ramadan can reach out to Mrs. Rollin and get an accommodation for those who are, who will be fasting, and I just haven't seen that in a newsletter before, I appreciate that they're doing that at Big Creek, and Mrs. Rollin also shared that they're incorporating restorative justice, restorative justice practices into the way that they are working with kids, and so I was really excited about that, and we'll look forward to hearing more about how that's working at Big Creek.
I was asked to speak at the World Language Honor Society induction last week for French, not French, German, Spanish, and Chinese, and it was the first time I've been to it, and it was just a great experience, the induction was done in that language, and up on the screen was the translation, so everybody that didn't speak that language could see what was going on, and the kids did it all, they were the ones that were doing the speaking, and so I'd just like to thank Mrs. Lai and Mrs. Chang and Mrs. Martin, who are the advisors, as well as all of our world language teachers, because it was really, really a great event.
Okay, and now it's recommended the board move into executive session for the purpose of the purchase of property for public purposes or the sale of property at competitive bidding.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Urquy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for coming, where are we moving to?